Monday, March 3rd, 2025, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, we're gonna stand now for our prayer. Mr. King, can you lead us in prayer? Lead us in prayer.
From here?
Come on. To the mic.
Mercy, let's bow our heads. Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, to hear, to listen, to be a voice of the city of Inkster. Lord, we operate under your control. Lord, we ask you to bless the leaders that are here, the citizens that are here, and finally, Lord, we ask that your will be done, despite of our thoughts and our feelings. This is our prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Protem Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Great, all right, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Need to add, take off anything?
Take off items.
I think we're gonna table it.
I mean, you're gonna table it?
Yeah, we're gonna table it.
Okay.
Any other changes we need to make? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some more. Support.
We probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. No presentations tonight, no public hearing. Consent agenda.
Some more. Second.
We probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, do we have any board and commission appointments?
Madam Clerk? Do we have one for housing? Again?
I think they're full, or is it resolved?
For, um, Miller? It's resolved.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think we did last meeting. Yeah, yeah. Um, no first reading tonight. Second reading.
Update City Ordinance 92.01, Adoption of Fire Prevention Code by reference City Ordinance 92.010, Fire Inspections.
Support.
Soon as we get to new business, we'll do that.
Oh, sorry. I'm like, oh.
You're in the right trap, though, you're in the right trap. All right, new business.
Consider approval to update City Ordinance 92.01, Adoption of Fire Prevention Code by reference, Ordinance 92.010, Fire Inspections.
Some more. Support.
We probably moved and supported, discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing administration to approve agreements with Kerr Pump and Supply for preventative maintenance of five combined sewer pump stations and the repair of the Carlisle Pump Station.
Some more.
Second, we probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing administration to approve a pump station service agreement with Kerr Pump and Supply for emergency maintenance and repair of the city's five combined sewer pump stations.
Some more. Support.
We probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing administration to approve the purchase of backup pumps for Mercino Dewandering LLC for maintenance activities and emergency operation of the combined sewer pump stations.
Some more.
Second, we probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider adopting a resolution to certify existing industrial drive east of Henry Rough accordance with the Act 51.
So, um, I'm sorry, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second, we probably moved to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And passes.
Consider a resolution to enact a moratorium on the approval and permitting new gas stations, liquor stores, and automobile and vehicle repair major, including collision, transmission, and undercoating shops within the city limits.
Second, amen.
We probably moved to second, discussion.
Yeah, um, are we gonna put a year on?
That's a one year.
Yeah, for one year.
Yeah, for one year.
One year?
Yep.
All right, any other comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, noted Notre Dame, case number LD 25-02 for 1,500.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And passes.
Okay, consider approving or denying a special land use 25-02 to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B1 Local Business District at 1173, 1183 Henry Rough. Site is located on the northeast corner of Henry Rough Road and Glenwood Street.
I'm making a motion to table this.
Second.
Oh, okay, okay, I make a motion to table on y'all. Next meeting.
It's properly moved, and I think second it. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And passes.
Consider resolution of adoption of the Inkster 2025 Master Plan.
Some more. Support.
We probably moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And passes. Now we hear from Tahuna?
Oh, I was just gonna say, so in two weeks, this changed today, you don't have to run us all the copies, we can just keep our copies in some places?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Everybody keep, uh...
I'm gonna be the one that's not gonna remember.
Okay, this is now public participation, everybody gets three minutes, we have the clock right there, so you'll know when your time is up. Mr. John Knight.
I'm having trouble getting my pension on the first. Tyler says that police and fire would be treated. For some reason or another, the new... They have a right to take and withhold it two or three days. I went to my institution, they delivered the checks three days ahead of time, but they instruct the institution not to honor the checks until the third. It wasn't necessary either. So I just wanna make the council aware of it, and I hope that we can take and do something to straighten that out.
Okay, before you leave, Knight, can you talk to the treasurer?
Yeah, could I, um, 'cause the, um, and I'm not sure if you had had communication with the city's HR director, but the question did, someone did ask that question last week. I know this past, so the checks are generally made, uh, to be made available on the first. Um, I know this past month, and I believe the prior month, the first fell on a weekend. So a question came up, um, about how it, how it would be handled. As, as the citizen indicated, as the retiree indicated, um, the, the city's police and fire pension funds, you're talking police and fire, correct? Police and fire recently switched, um, the banks that, the bank that we're using for the payments, uh, I believe that started as of November of last year.
Okay.
Um, and so the payments are to be made available on the first, as, as I indicated, these last two months, the first was on a weekend. And the question came up, when would the payment be available? And the response that I got from US Bank was that they, they make those payments available, it's kinda depended on the individual retirees' bank. I didn't have a long conversation, um, about that, but that was the response that was, that they, you know, that they do provide the funds, 'cause we provide them the information each month for the pension payments to be processed. And, you know, again, the issue is that the first is on a, um, when the first is on a weekend, is the, you know, generally, we expect that that money's gonna be available the last business day, in cases where the first falls on a weekend. So I will, I will do some further following up, um, as someone else had, had a similar question about this last week. Uh, and we do have a meeting on Thursday for the, uh, police, police, for the police and fire pension board.
What are you doing tonight that's violating some of our laws?
Understand, yeah.
Yeah, it's strange, because the banks are open on Saturdays, so the first last weekend was on a Saturday.
But normally, normally, payments are, are not, payments generally are not processed on a, not business, business day. And that's why the expectation would be, you know, that they would, if it's the first is gonna be on a weekend, Saturday or Sunday, that the payments are, are... Processed the la, the last day, just like if we have a payroll.
Yeah, ours is dead ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely find out, we'll give you the coordinates tonight.
I'll get, I'll get your information, uh, Mr. Knight.
Okay. Ooh, this is a good one. Masser? How do you pronounce? Carradine?
Yes, sir.
Like David Carradine Kung Fu? Okay. Love that show.
My complaint is about my water bill. I've been paying estimated bill for the last two years. And I went to the city hall when I paid my bill, and I asked him, he said, no, we cannot, we're not gonna send anybody out there, we're not gonna do anything, only not gonna reimburse you if you're overpaying.
Well, they say you're not gonna reimburse you.
Yeah, if I'm overpaying, they're not gonna reimburse me, they ain't not gonna send nobody.
Who'd you talk to?
Young man working on the...
Yeah, okay, I know you're talking about, we only have one young man working. Okay, um, that's not completely accurate, uh, can, can one of y'all talk to him? You didn't hear kinda what he said? He was getting estimated bills, and, uh, he came up to the city to pay, and he, he basically had quiet, what if I'm overpaying? Um, and, and I think he was told that, you know, you're not gonna get reimbursed even if you are overpaying.
That's what he, exactly what he said.
So, that's... You can talk to Mr. Bivins, you gonna step out in the hall and talk to him, Mr. Bivins?
You don't get your money back, but you, it goes to your next bill.
Oh, okay, okay. This is Director DPS, she's over the water department, so give him a call tomorrow.
Thank you, residents.
Okay, thank you for coming. You ready? Mike Jones. That's a cool name, Mike Jones. I always think of the rapper when I...
Good evening, the city council.
Good evening.
Mayor, residents. Uh, just wanna remind everyone that we have the Marshall Newsletter from the police department.
Yeah.
It's over here on the right, and a couple of events we have coming up. We have the Hustle and Groove on March 6th and March 20th, from 6 to 8, at Booker T. Dozier Rec Center. It only costs $5, you can get your tickets from the PD. Also, we have Coffee with the Cop on March 13th, from 11 to 1, at Twin Towers, 1900 Inkster Road. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Andrew King.
Good evening, council and mayor, um, citizens. Three things, one, I would like to address the landfill that's on the middle of Dunning. I would consider it a landfill because that, that lot that's supposed to be deemed for a dispensary or a grow house has not been used, and I don't, I've been talking to my neighbors, we don't want to look at that all summer again. So is there any progress on what they're doing with that lot, or is there any way that, if they can, is there some kind of forfeiture process? 'Cause it's been that way for quite some time now.
Well, as long as they pay taxes, we can't take it. But, Mr. Bivins, I'm, I'm, it was an engineering issue, remember with the water basin? I don't know what the status of that, do you have any information on that?
I wanna reach out to the owner, so.
Okay. We have your number, and we'll find out, I mean, they were communicating with the engineers.
Right.
And they told me I had to do something different.
And they switched in, man.
Yeah.
So I'll reach out to them.
Okay, second, second thing, um, I heard that they're bringing pickleball over, trying to get a pickleball court at the Dozier Center. AIA would like to donate 10 sets of pickleball, uh, rackets and balls to the Dozier Center.
Oh, wow.
For that. I'll drop them off tomorrow on my, on my way to work, I don't know what time you guys, will you be there around 10?
Yes.
Okay, I'll drop them off. Uh, the last thing is, once again, we are a school for the community. We're not a public school, but we're, we're not Inkster Public Schools, but we're a public school in the city, a public charter school in the city of Inkster. We are here for the city to educate our students and be a support to the city, in any way, shape, or form. I plan on working with the chief this summer with her community, with our students and our community programs, and any other programs. I know that a couple of years ago, we did a community cleanup. My student, high school students must have 150 community service hours before they graduate. So you have a built-in workforce of young people who are, who like to do this type of work. We're also, um, seeking donations for our, we have a club and, I have a school program in our school, where we have young men and ladies who are gonna be doing community service gardening work for single families and seniors in the city of Inkster. We're gonna start off small, but eventually, we want to be able to service those citizens who want their gardens looking nice, but may not be able to do it. So once again, AIA is here for the city, we just want the city to be here for us as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Once you get, like, the information for that stuff, please shoot us email, so we can come out and help, like, if you guys want to, like, with the gardening and cleanup and stuff like that.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say, we should make sure that, uh, the youth and Mr. King connect with the Inkster Beautification Committee, because every time those cleanups come up, they're looking for help.
That's true.
And it's the same handful of people that's out there, and...
190 student, high school students that need community service hours before they graduate.
You remember Mr. Henderson? Okay, cool, uh, thanks, that sounds great.
So if you know anybody who wants to donate slightly-used lawn mowers and edgers to this club, please let me know, 'cause we would take the, the equipment would be used for this project. We're gonna buy some, but donate it that can be worked on, fixed, or whatever is what we, we were looking for, I wasn't gonna do that, but boss lady over there.
Okay, a shot of butts.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, today, we are just giving an update, Parks and Recreation will be doing an Earth Day celebration. With that Earth Day celebration, we picked Parkwood Manor Park. It was, uh, it's one of our more recent parks, and it doesn't have any shade trees or benches, it just needs a little sprucing up. So, we paired with Home Depot. Home Depot is saying they, they can give us about $2,500 to $3,000 of a grant to add some amenities to the park, and they'll do all the work themselves, they just ask that we feed them, which we don't think is a problem. Um, while I was here speaking with Director Bivins about getting some square footage and some measurements, uh, Mr. Daldel informed me that we have a grant that gave us 66 trees. And it's from the, I forget the name, um, from ARC.
Yeah.
So, I'm working with the director of DPS, and of course, Director of Parks and Recs is on board. We would love for everyone to participate, this is a park that the community really pushed to have, it's very heavily used. Um, the equipment that is there is newer, so we wanna add some things, we wanna incorporate that into the Earth Day, which, we wanna do a little presentation with the kids of planting some seeds, or learning about how to use less electricity, how to nurture and love the earth, and how it can nurture and love you back. So, with that, um, I know that I heard for the ARC grants, we may need some help with planting the trees, so I hear that you have a lot of manpower. We can't do any digging, but we would love to, uh, ask if we can have some high school students that can come over and assist us with...
Get the showers and the gloves, we'll be there.
Okay, okay. So, uh, April 18th.
April 18th.
Is, uh, the Earth Day celebration, it's a Saturday. And we're gonna come back and present everything that we're going to itemize for the director, so we're gonna go, we're gonna pick out the things that we think will be needed, we'll put them all together, put together a price list of what they cost, send it to Home Depot, as well as the directors. And from what I understand, with the grant that we could get from Home Depot, they said just go pick out whatever we want. So, if there are any suggestions, any ideas, please, you know, give us a holler, so we can make sure that it's to what the community wants, because we're very proud of this, and we're very excited to do this for one of the parks. So far, we have a lot more to go to, so this is our goal.
And the reason why we chose Parkwood Manor, um, is because the block club, they fought so hard for that park, and I believe one of the, the president, that...
Former president, where is he?
I told her we had a surprise for her, she didn't know, she just happened to be here.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I'm sure that makes her very happy, because her and my namesake Shirley, they both fought hard for that park, and I watched them sitting here, you know, and I know they would love to see us restore, do some additional work to make it beautiful and playful for the kids, this and that.
Put their names on one of the benches.
That'll work.
That'll work, just, just let us know, this is a rededication to that block club, so please, let, let, let me, let me know, let any of us on the Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission know, and we will be very happy to work with you.
Give them a date and time.
Um, so, right now, we have a time of 11 to 4, it could change, depending on the weather of that day, and, um, if there's, you know, any specifics that we may need to alter, but April 18th from 11 to 4.
That's a, a Friday.
I'm sorry, April 19th, April 19th, thank you, I apologize. Yes. That's Saturday.
That'd be fine, okay, well, thank you both, appreciate you. Gabe Henderson.
Hello, family, I promise I won't talk about chicken coo, okay? But, okay, I'm, I'm Gabe Henderson, uh, of course, we know we have our, uh, block, uh, block club president, Ms. Gross, and we have, she is another, uh, member of our block club, okay? I wanna say that, you know, our block, block club's been very, very active and all that, and even, uh, I belong to the block club myself, belong to beautification and all that. I got a list of the dates that, uh, Mr. Bivins gave me, uh, we're gonna have our start, when I say, these dates are the dates that we're gonna have, you know, our dumpsters at four different locations, okay? Uh, Booker Dozier, Booker Dozier Rec Complex, um, okay, Penn Park, uh, Westwood Park, and, uh, well, okay, LeMone Park, okay, we're gonna have those. And events, I wanna get the name of the, uh, the, these events, we're gonna start in April, April 26th, normally, they're the last Saturday of the month, except for, in May, May, that, uh, runs into a, more and more day, and also, in September, it's gonna be a change, it's gonna be the next to the last, okay? Uh, I, we, I'm gonna give these dates, these are the dates that the dumpster's gonna be out. Okay, April the 26th, May the 24th, June the 28th, July the 26th, August the 23rd, September the 27th, October the 25th. Okay, Booker Dozier's our main location, that, uh, uh, okay, beautification, we're gonna be there, and we're gonna have gloves, and we have bags, and we're gonna have coffee, we're gonna have donuts and all that, and normally, our first kickoff, we have a, you know, maybe a few other things. And, uh, Mr. King.
Yes?
Uh, yes, sir, Dr. King, you know, those dates, uh, be a good date, especially the first date in April, for somebody, you know, the students to come.
First day of April?
No, no, 20, 26th of April, and we'd be there, and you can say to get the credit and all that. And, uh, and, and something about, you're saying about your equipment, I think we have a, uh... Okay, you know the guys to get, go get all my traffic tickets and all of that?
Community workers.
You said it, and they got a nice trailer, maybe we could use that trailer and get in the haul, the, uh... Oh, you got trailer and all that, equipment, and, um, anything you don't wanna know about small motors and all that, you know, I have a little knowledge, I have a few other people have the knowledge, we can get them running.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, that'd be a good thing, uh, and I'm so glad that, you see this guy right here, Brian Nolan right there, Mayor Nolan, he's the one that first got that, you know, park redevelopment, you know, we thank you for that. 'Cause, uh, before, you know, we had some, had, these gangsters came through there and tore all our equipment out, you know, I'm serious, they were gangsters, they said our equipment was, I said, well, the only thing they need a little groundwork and all that, took all that stainless steel and that, that galvanized, that stuff was strong and all that, and they made some money.
Yeah, they got some money.
I'm still, I'm still mad about that, but we, you know, you helped us develop, get that developed, which is a good thing, we appreciate that, and their kids do use that.
Yeah, they got some money.
And then, uh, back in the, can't see it now, we had cleared that area out, back in the forest area, it's a pond back there, it got some fish back there.
Yeah, it's wet, wetlands back there.
You say what?
Wetlands back there.
Wetlands, yeah, and been deemed, you know, national, and, uh, and we could, you know, maybe clear that, and you wanna go back there, and you can see, it was something else I wanted to say.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, no, okay, but anyway, we appreciate that, oh, yeah, and, and I did, our block club, with a few of our members, resurfaced that land, I, we surveyed it, uh, and we, uh, you know, put markers of where the park lie, in reference to the church and all that.
Okay.
You know, 'cause that's something I did, but back in the day, survey, but if we wanna resurface it, show exactly where the land lies, and, uh, so, this would be ours, that'd be the church, yeah, we can do that.
I think we should do that, especially, maybe we're doing our Earth Day, so we can know where the boundaries are.
Boundaries are, yeah.
You know, for the park.
For the park, right, we stake them out and all that, get out there, level my transit, yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
And I think that's about all.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
I'd like to say I love y'all, you know, we don't... We're, we're good folks here. We got a lot of money, but we got a lot of good, you know, spirit and loving, caring for one another, we just, I thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Last but not least, Chris Sanders.
I just wanted to stop in this evening, um, because I don't know if most residents here know a very important thing happened this past week, um, was in the city of Inkster, um, and I'm here to address that. Mayor Protem Stephen Chisholm celebrated his 25th birthday. 25th in holding, so if he's 25, I think councilwoman over here might be four, I'm not sure. And Freddie, I'm sure you're even younger than that, if he's 25, but I just wanted to wish you a happy birthday, the thing is, you don't answer my phone calls, so.
Oh, man.
I answer Inkster residents' phone calls.
Woo, okay, shots fired. Wow.
I won't even sing, though, I promise.
That's good.
Nope.
That's good. Only Mr. Richardson's allowed to sing at the council meeting, that's it. All right, uh, Madam Clerk.
No comment to see me, mayor.
Oh, great, we didn't get any correspondence?
No.
Oh, wow, okay, Mr. Treasurer.
Uh, good evening, council, um, just wanted to remind the residents that the, um, tax deadline did pass on this past Friday, uh, so we can't, um, receive any further payments, uh, here at city hall for this year's property taxes, uh, any payments now have to be made at Wayne County. But we are continuing to process mail, any mail that was, uh, posted, postmarked as of, uh, Friday, we will continue to process that during this week, but we can no longer accept any payments, nor can those payments, uh, be made online, so just wanted to make that announcement.
Okay, great, all right, so what we got here, Councilwoman Richardson?
Don't talk about it.
Turn her mic up.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, um, I just wanna say thank you, um, to the residents that did attend the community forum on Saturday, was, uh, attended, um, Eric Sabree was there, uh, he did help some of the, uh, residents make payment arrangements, and talked about some of the programs that they had. Uh, also, Congresswoman Rashida talked about issues, what's going on in Washington, which is very interesting. Um, Parks and Rec, uh, I wanna thank Ray, not Ray Ray, but the other Ray, that was there to fix up the room, and he worked very hard, uh, but I did notice that there is no electricity along one side of the wall. So, tell the mayor, you need some money to get that fixed, because that can be our money maker, that should, all of the plugs should be working there, uh, but thank you for your assistance for that. We'll have pamphlets from Rashida, uh, from, um, Eric Sabree, one thing... One thing they did, the citizens did complain about was that they talked to, they called the assessor's office. And the assessor's office does not return phone calls. So they had started calling, uh, down to Wayne County complaining to Eric Sabree. So he let me know. So I told him I would make sure that I relay that so that our citizens can get, we don't want our complaints to go outside. Okay, so I just wanted to put that out to you. And for my DTE, Community Engagement Representative, who was a no-show, I don't know who was supposed to be there, but I had citizens looking to talk to them. They were not there. So we're gonna have to do better with that next time. But everybody else was there. I have, do have some flyers also, um, from, uh, the Wayne County Veterans Affairs. He had booklets. I'll have them out on the side. There was a lot of people that did take advantage of the state of Michigan Mobile Unit. A lot of people renewed their licenses ahead of time, including Detroit. Eric Sabree and his assistants, they all got their license ahead of time. So that, that was a good thing. So I just wanna thank you guys for supporting that effort. And the next one I'll be having in probably in a couple of months, I'll make sure I get some kids to help so that they can be a part of this, of the process. Uh, also, I wanna say thank you to the chief. Heard chat with the chief. You guys missed it. Yes. She decorated the room with table covers and the chairs were covered and she had vase. Y'all know I'm kinda, you know. I like that.
Yeah.
I heard you, I heard that poo should come out. But she had flowers and candles and our chief cooked. She fried chicken. She had greens with hot water cornbread.
All right, all right.
She said chicken. Chief don't know about no hot water cornbread.
Yes, she did, and it was good. And you know I cooked.
Oh, man.
Macaroni and cheese. Macaroni and cheese and her yams were slamming, okay?
Oh, look, you didn't put, look, look, chief, look at him.
That's out the bag again. Sounds like we gotta do a ne- next, next council meeting is potluck on the chief.
That's gonna spread like wildfire.
You can chat with him all night long.
Uh, it was very good. Thank you for, you know what, like I was saying, some of our employees just go the extra mile. She didn't have to do that. Uh, to serve dinner. But I was glad. I had been out all day shopping and I, I was supposed to go home and cook for Mister, but Mister was happy cause he got chicken. All the chicken he wanted, so I was there and Mayor Pro Tim came in and I saw you with your carryout plate.
I was coerced by grandmother chief to get me a plate. Get my mama a plate. That's what she said.
But it was, it was.
Grandma.
Auntie.
My, my grandma cooked better.
Oh, look. She took it, she'll take it. But, um, you know, when she does these, it is good for the citizens to come out and chat. And, uh, you know, I still, I had one person, there was an Uber driver and she did recommend that you name, um, Michigan Avenue, Livingston Boulevard. She keeps getting tickets. I'm not saying nothing about that.
Oh.
But it is good and so I wanted to invite the community to be, support that. Wherever she is, you have complaints, um, please, please take advantage of chat with the chief. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Howard.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Scott.
Oh, shout Inxter.
Councilwoman Bishop. That's for me, man. Okay. Councilwoman Rethis.
Um, I just wanna thank Jerome DPS for getting that speed bump up quickly. A resident was calling, had a flat tire, ran over the speed bump debris. So thank you to that. Um, and then I had a question about demolition of property. So does the condemnation board, do they just do commercial property or do they do residential property?
They can do any property.
Okay, well, there's a house on, um, at the end of Spring Hill. Um, how do we, how does that get on the list?
Call the chief, Kate.
Okay.
You have the, uh, address?
There's not an address on there, but I can take.
Spring Hill in what?
Um, just Spring Hill. Is that the very end? What is that, uh, Z, is that the north, north?
Cherry.
And Cherry, okay, yeah.
I know what you're talking about.
That house doesn't work. Um, also, this is for code enforcement. I've been riding my area. Cherry Street was looking good. It's back to dumping now. So they're back to dumping back there. So if we can get a few more cars back there, just cruising the area. And then I went to Trap Bingo, my first Trap Bingo with the police department. I had a good time. I was in there doing all ninety songs and standing up in my seat and so I had a good time. Yep, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, thank you. Um, this past Saturday, no, not this past Saturday, two Saturdays ago now, I was able to attend one of our spring conventions that helps facilitate our political processes. And it was unique, to say the least. Uh, just wanna thank the citizens of Inxter and those who may not be in Inxter to listen and, and attend this with us. Thank you for your support. It was jam-packed. We were able to make, make it through. Um, there were some learning curves that came about, as we do with any conventions that we go to, how to enhance and facilitate a better time for our people. Um, secondly, trivia question, does anybody know what the hold music is for priority waste? The hold music. Yep, I Love Trash by Oscar DeGrasse. It's been stuck in my head all day long. Well.
Yep.
That's why I learned it today, because my boat waste did not get picked up. And I was on the phone with them when two, when both got picked up. Um, so I'm gonna call back tomorrow and follow our process, but I did wanna make you all aware that they do answer the phone. Um, you will, you know, it, it was, it was backed up because I went through the whole process to, and I was opting to get called back. And as I was pressing one, someone picked up. But unfortunately, right now live, nothing on my street. All boat pickup items are still sitting out there. I did ask the lady, cause I wanted to be sure that they hadn't necessarily changed the processes. So I confirmed that it was just a normal, you know, sit it out there and they would pick it up. And she said, yes, you sit out there in your normal trash and they'll come right on. I always try to be proactive, cause I don't always trust people. Um, just because I worked in those, not the garbage field, but those types of field where it was on the technician's discretion if they picked it up or not. Or if they just drove down the street and said, oh, it ain't that big, they could've threw that in the regular garbage. But anyway, um, those items for me and my neighbors are still sitting out there tonight. And I will call back tomorrow just to let the lady know that, or the gentleman, whoever answered the phone, that it didn't happen. And, um, Mr. Bivins, you all are aware as well too, so if you can do anything on the back end, that'd be great. Um, and then I just wanted to encourage everyone to do your best to stay healthy, because Friday I was feeling absolutely a hundred percent fine. And then by the time I got home at five-thirty, I was completely nauseous and I did not leave the house again until this morning when I went to work. Because I had one of those viruses that made me lose about nine pounds this weekend. And, um, I am not lying. And so. So when Mr. Sanders talked about his phone calls not being answered, I was on the floor calling for the Lord. I could not answer.
And I was always.
You're not the Lord. So, um, yeah, that was, that was quite the rough night. And that's why I wanted to encourage everyone, cause at our jobs and schools and everything, it's, it gets in there and it just spreads around really quickly if we're not cautious. Uh, on just being cleaned, if you will, or a little bit cleaner, you know, wash your hands, all that good stuff. So that's why I just wanted to encourage everyone. And I am definitely one that, like I said, it happened Friday, I did not leave the house until this morning, cause I self-isolate. A lot of people like to be in your face and how can I help you and do this, stay away from me. Let, let me figure out how to get better, sit my food outside my door, whatever the case may be. Uh, and I'm being serious, cause a lot of us don't do that. We think we're helping, but all we're doing is contracting what the other person has and then we go give it to someone else. And it keeps just spreading around, spreading around, spreading around. And, and, and another big favor, your HVAC, change your furnace filters regularly. I used to be a person that was wanting to be cheap and didn't want to do that.
Used to be cheap?
Now I buy four at a time instead of one. So, yeah, so that's all I have.
All right.
It's frugal, sir.
Frugal, frugal. Frugal's good. Uh, last week I had an opportunity to go to Rope Shaw High School and, uh, last couple of days of Black History Month and we played Stump the Mayor. I have to acknowledge, they stumped the mayor. Um, they had some great questions, great, you know, these high school kids, smart. And they had their phones, they were Googling obscure stuff and making me answer it, or I was trying to answer. So we had a good time over there. And this Saturday, we went to, uh, it's March Reading Month. So went over to the library, little kids was over there. They had a great time, making bookmarks and, and just coloring and having a good time. So I wanna encourage everybody to go volunteer. Think of there every Saturday this month. So pop in, read a short book, you know, hang out with the kids a little bit, um, it gets you motivated, you know, to do better. Um, and also, we don't forget the tutoring is under the library from twelve to two. Um, we can not get a lot of people, so anybody who knows anyone in junior high or high school or elementary who needs help, it's free tutoring by the young man. He came and presented to us at council one time. Um, him and his, him and his friend and, um, they were there the whole time. It just, I think one person came, you know, to get tutored. So it's free, spread the word with school age kids. If they need any help, it's free every Saturday from twelve to two. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you.
You have a motion? Oh, yeah. Um, I'm sorry to inform everybody, Pastor Hearn's, you know, Hearn, who's always here at our meeting and, uh, President of our Minister Alliance Council, his son passed away in a car accident yesterday in Taylor, thirty-six years old. Um, so I talked to him this morning, you know, he's still in shock. Um, but if you see him, you know, or just throw a prayer up for him. You know, if you know him, give him a call and he's, he's, you know, we talked for a while this morning, cause he's, he's, he's going through it right now. So, you know, stuff's happening every day, you know. So that's all I have, y'all. Motion.
Second.
Move to second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say nay.
Nay.